All right. Good evening and welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of June 27th, 2022. In accordance with LB 898, please be advised that the copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of business of the council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization or group, if any, including an address, that you may be representing by such person or group unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, organization, group, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date, nor planned for a future agenda. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Our first item of business today for Monday, June 27th, 2022, is a reminder, due to the Independence Day holiday, city council will not meet on July 4th, 2022. First would be our consent agenda, Sections 1 and 2.
Is there anyone here to speak on any of the items on the consent agenda? Mr. Christie?
Nancy Christie, City Attorney, 555 South 10th. I just wanted to briefly touch on Item 1B and just clarify that this is back before you because of a typo in the previous resolution, and we are just bringing it back before you to correct that error.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Christie? Okay, thank you. Anyone else here to speak on any of the items on the consent agenda for today? Okay, very good. Madam Clerk?
We can now vote on these items. Item 1A is reappointing Janika Long to the Aging Partners Area-Wide Advisory Council for a term to expire June 20th, 2025, introduced by Beckius.
Second.
Moved by Raybold, seconded by Shob. Go ahead.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 1B is amending Resolution Number A93339, adopted by City Council on May 23rd, 2022, related to city personnel board appointment, introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Raybold, seconded by Shob. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 2A was introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
All right, do we have any discussion? No, just setting the hearing date.
Yep.
Let's go ahead and vote on that. Madam Clerk?
Okay. Bowers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. That concludes our consent agenda. We shall move on to Section 4, Public Hearing Liquor Resolutions. I'll be calling Items 4A and 4B together. Item 4A is application of Res LLC doing business as Cheapest Damn Cigarettes for a Class D liquor license located at 4821 Cornosker Highway, and the related manager application of Lori Rizak.
Is there anyone here to speak on Item 4A, 4B? Yes, please come forward. If you could please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, City Council. I'm John Latka, Legal Counsel for Res LLC, the applicant, 409 South 17th, Omaha, Nebraska.
I'm gonna also swear in as well. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the truth as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Could you tell us a little bit about the application, please?
Sure. So this application is for an existing business currently operating under a temporary operating permit, which was approved by the Nebraska Liquor Commission. Cheapest Damn Cigarettes had been operating for a while, recently purchased by Res LLC, and the applicant hopes to continue much of the business, and like I said, is currently operating. That temporary operating permit expires August 11th, by which time we hope to have full approval from this body, as well as the Nebraska Liquor Commission.
Very good. Thank you. Questions for the applicant?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for coming forward. I saw that it's a Class D, and I saw that you were not going to be selling carryout drinks, individual drinks, but I did not see on the application whether or not you thought at some point in the future you would have a drive-through service?
There is a drive-through service, I believe, on the application.
I couldn't see that blank checked. I could have overlooked it.
On page 3 of the application, there's a checkbox for Class B, C, and D liquor. Do you intend to allow drive-through services? And the applicant checked yes.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Very good. Other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Madam Clerk?
I'll be calling Items 4C and 4D together. Application of the Gotham Bar LLC, doing business as the Gotham Bar for a Class C liquor license located at 311 North 8th Street, and the related manager application of Leo M. Bretta.
All right, is there anyone here to speak on this particular application? Yes, please, come on down. You can just start with your name and address, please.
Leo Bretta, 8285 Sutherland Street, Lincoln.
Could you tell us a little bit about your application?
Basically, we are going into the old J.J. Hooligan spot in the Sullivan Building. It is a basement, yep. It's got a nice makeover so far, so I think it'll be a good addition to the Haymarket, so.
Very good. Questions for the applicant?
Just for procedural reasons, I'm gonna go ahead and just have you swear. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you just gave was the truth as you really believe it to be?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Madam Clerk?
Okay, I'll be calling Items 4E and 4F together. Application of J.J.F. Enterprises LLC, doing business as The Post for a Class CK liquor license located at 2001 N Street, and the related manager application of Jesse J. Foster.
Is there anyone here to speak on that application?
Hi, good evening. I'm Jesse J. Foster. My address is 2001 N Street, owner-operator of The Post.
Okay.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Very good. Could you tell us a little bit about the application, sir?
Sure. The application is for a new experience bar, sommelier, concierge, two private seating areas. It's basically a bourbon bar that will offer member services, including car services, bottle service, private event planning, a one-to-four members-only service on Sundays, just the idea of delivering simple expectations. So it's an experience bar that also happens to provide liquor.
Okay, very good. Questions for the applicant? All right, seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
I'll be calling Item 4G, manager application of Richard W. Fountain for disabled American veteran doing business as DAV Robert Flansburgh, Chapter 7, located at 3901 North 70th Street.
All right, anyone here to speak on this application? Yeah, come on forward.
My name is Richard Fountain, and I'm 1440 Carlos Drive, in Lincoln.
Very good.
I don't need to swear in for a manager.
You're okay for this one.
Okay.
Could you tell us a little bit about your application?
Application itself, the previous manager did not want to do it anymore, so I basically put my name in a hat and kind of luckily got the job. I don't know if it's luckily or not, but yes, I have the job.
Short straw, okay.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Questions? All right, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Madam Clerk?
I'll be calling Item 4H, manager application of Christopher L. Martinez for Whole Foods Market, Nebraska LLC, doing business as Whole Foods Market, located at 6055 O Street.
Anyone here to speak on this application? Yes, please come on forward. Just start with your name and address, please.
It's Christopher Martinez, 3037 Randolph Street.
You want to tell us a little bit about the application?
Yes, we are just looking to put my name on the license as our previous leadership had moved to another state.
Okay, very good. Questions at all for the applicant? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Madam Clerk?
I'll be calling Item 4I, manager application of Amber S. Thompson for Salt Creek Hospitality LLC, doing business as Town Place Suites by Marriott, located at 7353 Husker Circle.
Come forward.
Amber Thompson, 520 North 9th Street in Beatrice.
Tell us a little bit about your application.
So I'm the recent manager for Town Place Suites, so I've taken over the management position. We do sell beer and wine, so need the application approved for that.
Sounds good. Questions for the applicant? All right, very good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk?
I'll be calling Item 4J, application of Zoo Blues Inc., doing business as Zoo Bar for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 438 feet by 267 feet at 14th Street between O and P Streets on July 8th, 2022, from 4:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. and July 9th, from 12:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m.
Hi.
Hi.
Go ahead and give your name and address, sir.
My name and address? Pete Waters, the address of the bar is 136 North 14th.
All right, Pete, tell us what's going on.
We're gonna try to celebrate our 49th anniversary of the Zoo Bar and for the street festival. Done it quite a few years consecutively, and just hope we can do it again, July 8th to 9th.
Very good.
That time of year again.
Yeah.
Any questions for the applicant? All right, very good.
Okay, thank you so much.
Have fun, good luck, thank you.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Larry.
Madam Clerk?
We can now vote on these items?
Mr. Chair, seeing no one else coming forward for these items, I'd like to move approval of Item 4A through 4J.
Second.
Motion by Shob, seconded by Washington. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
Thank you very much for coming in, we appreciate it today. Fit. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to public hearing resolutions. Madam Clerk, whenever you are ready.
Okay, I'll be calling Item 5A, Comprehensive Plan Conformance 22006, application of the Urban Development Director to review as to conformance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan. A proposed amendment to the Lincoln Center Redevelopment Plan to amend the Golds Redevelopment Project to create a new project, area Golds Redevelopment Project Phase 1, to include the renovation and rehabilitation of the original Golds building for a hotel, commercial space, and underground parking on property generally located at 1023 and 1033 O Street.
Good evening, I'm Dallas McGee with the Urban Development Department, 555 South 10th Street.
And I'm Hallie Salem, City of Lincoln Urban Development Department, 555 South 10th Street.
We're gonna be making some introductory comments on the project. We'll also be asking the developer to come up and give you more detailed information, but I'd like to start by identifying the project area. This is a plan amendment to the Lincoln Center Redevelopment Plan. That plan was adopted nearly 30 years ago. We were doing a little bit of research. This is the 52nd plan amendment to that, so it's been very useful in guiding development in the downtown area. The Golds building is located on the, what we call Block 55 of the original plat. It's between 10th and 11th Streets, O Street and N Street. It occupies approximately 75% of the block. The portion we'll be talking about today is Phase 1, which is the northeast portion, which is the original, the tower of the project. And we'll be talking about the building just to the west of that, which is 1023 O Street. It's a two-story building immediately adjacent to that, to the Phase 1. The proposal that will be brought to you today is for a hotel with 110 rooms on the six floors of the hotel. It would include about 6,000 square feet of retail or restaurant on the first floor, and it will include about 40 parking spaces at the lower level. And the lower level includes some vault space that extends out into the right-of-way on all sides of the block that would be included in the area that would be developed for parking. The developer has completed a market study of the hotel, and they're here to give you a summary of that study tonight. Phase 1 anticipates the demolition of the 1023 building. That's the little two-story building immediately west of the six-story tower. And it proposes the demolition of the southern half of the block in a later phase, Phase 2 for redevelopment. And they're here to talk about that as well, although that's not on the action for tonight. Another key piece of this project is the removal and finding a new location for the transit station that is located on N Street and L Street. The developers are working closely with Startran to identify a new location, and that location is critical in terms of moving ahead with this project. So that is a priority of the project as well. Hallie is here and can talk about future steps and a number of other things.
So this is not the first time we've been in front of you for the Golds building project, as you may remember. This is really, I think, the third crack at it. We came to you before with a plan amendment for the entire Golds building, and it was a good project. I think we were all excited about the project and hopeful that that project could move forward. Some of the things proposed for that building were supported by Historic Preservation Commission, including windows on both the south and west facades of the block. And when it came to getting the approvals from the National Park Service for that in order to receive national historic tax credits, they were unable to convince National Park Service that that was an acceptable modification to the building, and therefore, they could not achieve the funding resources they needed to carry out the project. So this is really the third iteration of a project for this block, and it's just that first phase, as Dallas said. First phase is a $24 million investment, including up to $4.2 million in tax increment financing. All of the details have not been worked out for the tax increment financing. Those, that will be worked out with the redevelopment agreement. But we're excited that this is at the intersection of two projects, both the Downtown Corridors project along O Street and the 11th Street Greenway project. And that really gives us an opportunity to generate some TIF for public investment in both of those projects. So the O Street and Downtown Corridors project, which by the way, we will have an open house coming up July 12th for, so I've gotta put that plug in at the James Snyder Trail Center. So we would like people to come out to that. And so as this streetscape is developing, we expect a contribution to that piece of it. And then we also expect general improvements to the building itself, facade enhancements, and energy enhancements as well, as well as some other potential utility and other improvements. The improvements to the exterior have been reviewed in the schematic form by Historic Preservation Commission. They've been to three Historic Preservation Commission meetings. I will say that there is a difference of opinion expressed at the Historic Preservation Commission among the commissioners regarding the south half of the block and the demolition of the south half. There was general support for the redevelopment of the six-story building, as well as the demolition of 1023 O Street. And so, and we would like the developer to speak to that a little bit as well, what they have planned. Future steps, we'll be back to you with a redevelopment agreement as the terms get negotiated, as well as a plan amendment. We're expecting a plan amendment for Phase 2 and a redevelopment agreement for Phase 2. And then the developers here, Andrew Willis is here, as well as Mike Works and Justin Hernandez. If you would like them to provide any additional information before you ask questions, or we can ask questions, answer questions now.
Sure. Questions right now for urban development?
I have. Has urban development seen the market study?
Pardon me, can you?
Urban development?
Yes, well, we saw a summary letter, and they're willing to share that with you tonight. Market studies are generally proprietary because of the kinds of information that's in them, but they did put together a letter, which they showed us just today, and they will show that to you as well.
That'll be good to hear, thank you.
Questions? All right, very good. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Mr. Willis?
Good evening, members of the council. Andrew Willis, 233 South 13th Street, on behalf of the owners and applicants, or developers. So that was a pretty good lead into the project. We have the original 1924 six-story tower, which I'll call the North Tower, that's toward the northeast corner, as Phase 1 of this project. 110 hotel rooms, roughly 6,000 square feet of retail on the first floor, retail restaurant space. It really, it should be a good fit, and since we've already brought that up, I'm gonna go ahead. Can I hand out the, this? Here's... So what this is, is, this is the kind of a summary of the feasibility study that was put together. So back in October of last year, they got a market study and feasibility study for a hotel in downtown. That was re, they had it reassessed March of this year to just make sure everything still looked the same. So that study's been done, and again, because of the nature of the information in there, we prefer not to share the full study. But again, this is from the consultant that did the study, this letter, and in there you'll see, in their opinion, the new, not only is the market, is this a, is this fit there, but they say specifically that this is expect, this additional 110 rooms is expected to have little or no effect on the existing inventory of the market downtown. Part of that is, just, there is a pretty good demand for hotel rooms, and that's rising. We talked to Jeff Mall, Lincoln Convention and Visitors Bureau. If you look at the numbers from the lodging tax recently, so the fiscal years, you know, 2019 to 2020, there's a little over $3.4 million in lodging tax. 2020, obviously, with everything shut down, that went down significantly, so it was under 2, it was about $1.9 million of lodging tax. So this next fiscal year, '21 to '22, it's back up to almost $4 million, $3.9 million. So we're already exceeding what was the high number prior to everything kind of shutting down. So again, we're, there seems to be a lot of, a lot of, you know, events coming back, a lot of that's youth sports, but all, everything else that's coming back. So there really, the numbers from the Convention and Visitors Bureau seem to also support what the consultant said, which is that the market is there and that there is a need for more rooms. So again, we believe this will be a good fit. It's probably, as I said, about $24 million for the whole project. Between the hotel, the restaurant, and retail, this Phase 1 is looking at probably 65 to 100 jobs, all in. Now, there's a lot of, a lot of moving pieces with this, some of them have already been mentioned. We've got Startran and the bus station. So, you know, one of the key pieces here is relocating that, that makes, you know, that's a good fit for downtown and where it fits best. The developers have been working closely with Startran to find the right location, to secure that property, to get the best situation possible for Startran, not only for the city, but also with all the, all the rules that are in place for, you know, the federal rules for a bus transit. So that piece is being worked on, but again, they're working closely with Startran on that. You know, LES, the LES vaults that are underground and that, there's, it's a big challenge there. They've got these, the vaults located underground, so developers have been working closely with LES and with Olson, so they've hired Olson as well. So we've got the same engineering on the city side and project side to make sure that it's well-coordinated, to make sure it works best for everybody, to make that, to relocate that in a way that obviously doesn't, isn't detrimental to downtown, but also you can use the space. The underground parking, it's crucial for any project, particularly with, if we want retail there, to get some parking, so underground parking. And so again, there's, we're still, you know, this is one of these moving pieces. It's a challenge there, but again, that would, the idea would be that would extend into these areaways, these public areaways. In order to do that, there has to be a license in place, and it's laid out what that license for the areaway looks like, what those fees are. It's all part of the code, and the details are still in process. But again, that's part of the overall project, would require that license and pursuant to normal city code. Obviously, this is going to be, this is going to work with both the 11th Street Corridor Plan and the O Street Corridor Plan. So part of this is the streetscapes, which is really a key to this, making this, the amenities and these retail restaurant spaces really attractive, but also to fit in with, you know, to coordinate with the city on those, on the, overall, the larger plans that are in place. So again, there's a lot of pieces to make this work, just from a big picture. And all those pieces are still being worked on, and, but, but they're a piece of, you know, they're part of this. And that does, and then getting to, you know, another one that was, you know, 1023, speaking of 1023 O Street, part of that is... 1023 O Street, part of that is, in order for this, in order for this hotel, for the rehabilitation of the North, the North Tower to work, there needs to be windows. We need windows on the west side, windows on the south side. Without that, this doesn't work. And so part of the challenge, speaking specifically to 1023 O Street, was the spacing that was needed and what would, and what would, what would be required there. At one time, we were thinking it was going to have to be full demolition in a space there. Well, we've actually, working with the city, made pretty good progress on how, you know, we're still working on the exact plating of it, but how that would work, so that, because again, from the developer's side, we don't want, we want, we don't want any breaks in that facade either. And so we think we've got this figured out to where we can still accomplish the windows that are needed for the hotel and maintain that O Street facade without, you know, without a break in it. Now, you know, demoing the building that's in really bad shape right now, but making sure that there's not, there won't be a, you know, a drive or anything through there. So we're working on that piece as well, but again, there's, made a significant progress in, and again, from our side as well, the ideal, ideal would be to have no break in O Street, and we think we've got there as well. Again, just one of the many pieces to make this work. And then, and that doesn't even get us to our, you know, then we start talking about the, the condition of the Golds Building and why, why this redevelopment is necessary anyway. You know, the building is, it's now 100% vacant, it was, it was 60% vacant a couple of years ago, the only, the only tenant left was Department of Health and Human Services. They were already struggling from, from pretty bad conditions, I mean, there had been a, there'd been a grievance in place from their employees to the state to say that these, you know, the conditions aren't good, we can't keep this cool, we, it's, it's not efficient, there's mold, all of these things that, that again, these are the problems that need to be fixed. And, and so it's probably, I mean, it would assume to me that's part of the reason why they wouldn't renew the, renew the lease. Their, the, the building was not, it didn't work for, for their, for their use, and there hasn't been an ability to get any other tenants in as well. You know, looking valuation wise, in 2019, the building was valued at $7.4 million, and it's now 2.6. Where that's, you know, more than 65, about 65% decrease in valuation, again, just from conditions, vacancy, you know, conditions we're addressing. Structurally, if you think about, so the North, the North Tower, the original 1924 building, built with concrete, built really, you know, really solid structure. Now, there's going to need to be a lot of facade work, and that's part of the TIF, is dealing with the facade and the preservation, historic preservation, renovation of that facade. But generally speaking, that original piece is in good shape, or can be, can be renovated. They expanded slightly in the 1929 additions, there's multiple additions to this building. So the 1929, they built out a little bit, and then really, that's where they crossed that, the east-west alley to the, to the south half. There's no real good plans on how that connected, what that looks like, it, it's sort of, was everything was put together piecemeal. Then there was the, the two further additions on the south half over time, I forget the exact years, but through the 50s. Those, that south half, that was put up for, for the department store, large space, you know, large retail space, it didn't, wasn't really, it's, it's difficult to repurpose for anything else. Not only that, the, the quality or the, the condition, or the, the structure is not of the same quality as that original tower. We've got a lot of issues with, you know, not only just typical leaky roof type issues, but that is, it's actually, you know, the, the issues have permeated into the structure. So even to the extent that it may look like that structure can be saved, the facade can be saved, there's a significant amount of structural concerns underneath, to where by the time you're tearing everything down, there's nothing, to get to the issues that need to be fixed, there's nothing left to be preserved on that. And, and, and as Dallas and Hallie mentioned, it's been tried a couple times, there's been a couple of projects that have came, that have tried to look at that, for various reasons it didn't work out. The real benefit of this, or what we really want to stress with this project is, you know, in the Journal Star, after the last sort of project couldn't get financed, and that had to deal with cutting the windows in the, in the south half, the owner at that time said, "I'm going to tear the whole thing down, can't do anything with it." Well, that's not the plan. The plan really was focused on preserving the original tower. So the goal here is preservation of the original tower. Now, in, in order to do that unfortunately, you have to tear down the south half. And, and that really needs to be done, again, to make the, to make the North Tower work, we, you need a, you need south and west windows. So there needs to be some changes to the facade, particularly on that south half, that needs to be, that involves the demolition. Now, this is Phase One, and we hope to be back very soon with Phase Two. There's a lot of pieces, again, this, I mentioned a lot of the moving pieces just did on Phase One, but it's the same on Phase Two as well, and but, but hope, the, the goal here is to come back with another plan, another redevelopment plan for Phase Two, hopefully within a few months, we don't know, but again, it's, it's, it's a challenge from a timing perspective, they really need to get this moving, Phase One, in order to, I guess, keep Phase Two coming along, but we can't, we can't not deal with the demolition immediately. That has to be done immediately, both for Phase One, also just from a cost perspective, you know, the demolition of the entire thing now, we've got, we've got pricing, we've got, we've got the ability to do that, and it's all, everything's just going up. So it just, it, you know, if both just, from a pure feasibility of any project at all, we need to do that, but also just cost-wise, it doesn't make sense not to. So, again, I just want to stress, even though, and again, even though demolition of the south half is not part of Phase One, it's not part of this project at all, it, it really need, it will occur no matter what, it, it's, I mean, any project really, that's, that's at this point, it's, it's probably a, it's inevitable, but, but again, with that said, the goal here still is historic preservation, the goal here still is preserving that North Tower. Again, this has been through historic preservation on three different occasions, ultimately there was concerns about not knowing what that south half was going to look like. But I would note, at least in our initial meeting in February, initially talking about, and, and we weren't asking for a, an action on the demolition, but just to present the fact that we, that the demolition of the south half would occur, at least initially there was not, you know, a, a opposition to the icon concept of demolishing the south half. You know, looking at, at the minutes of the meeting, you know, and notice one of the commissioners, Jim McKee, said, you know, was fine with the demolition of the south half, it, you know, the minutes say, "The south half of the building has always been uninteresting to him as far as historic perspective." And so the concern really was, what are you going to do with that building? And that was the information they didn't have. So acknowledging that they didn't have the information that they would have liked to see, I don't think I would characterize those meetings as opposition necessarily to demolishing the, the building eventually. We just kind of, because of the timing, because of the way this works out, we didn't have the information they needed, but, but it really, to make this all work, this is how it needs to proceed. So I think, make sure to hit on the other points here. And again, really, we've got a lot of challenges, you know, historic, you know, with, with the facade, in order to preserve that building, it's going to cost a lot of facade enhancements, there's going to be energy efficiency enhancements, relocating those utilities, doing a lot of that work, that's where a lot of these TIF costs come, that we're, we're dealing with, the streetscapes and coordinating that with the city on their plans. And again, that's all still to, there's a lot of pieces still to be worked out, and that will be part of the redevelopment agreement, but again, this is, this is sort of step one that we need to get done. And I would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions at all for Mr. Willis? Councilman Cho.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Willis, for coming forward. In the introduction from urban development, they mentioned a little bit about the Startran bus thing. They said you were still working on it, is there information you can share with me about that? That's a very active corner and needed for the city. How optimistic are you? Can you, what can you share with me?
I may have Mike Works come up and mention as well, I think, I think we're, we can say that we're, we're, we've got a, I mean, I feel like, fairly optimistic in the sense of there's a location determined that would work, both from a, from the routing, and, and that would work from a city that's, that's available, or potentially available. And, and again, working closely with Startran, it seems to match up with their needs, as well as the need to the project, but, but maybe I'll defer to Mike to talk a little more about that.
Mike Works, 6007 Norman Road, Lincoln, Nebraska. Thanks for having us here. To answer your question, I, I can't add a whole lot to that, we've been acting, working directly with Startran and proactive about helping find them a site, which they've agreed is a good site. We are in negotiations with the landowner on that site, and Startran has actively been designing how that site would lay out and work for, for the new bus transit station. So at this point, I think we're all fairly confident that that's going to happen, but things, things, things could still fall apart. Now, I will tell you that the first thing we did when we got to this site was, you know, we're working with some national and some regional retailers and restaurants to come into this site, both on the south side and the north side, and they were all very clear that the bus transit station has to be moved before anything can really work on this site, and that includes our franchise for the hotel. And so that has been our number one goal from day one, and I, I feel like we've made some good progress, and the city's been very, very helpful in every, in all those negotiations so far. And hopefully, we're a couple weeks away from being able to announce something.
And I suppose only, I guess the one thing I would add to that, sorry, is, is, you know, not only is that necessary to move it for, for this project, but it really is beneficial, the, the site that's being designed would actually, you know, function better, you know, there's no public facilities at that corner right now, you know, for the, for the patrons of the, of Startran, when they go and they're transferring buses, there's no public rest, there's no, there's, it's not an ideal transit, transfer station. And so hopefully, we can alleviate some of those problems and make it, make it better for everybody.
And the last thing I'd add is that we have committed to hundreds of thousands of dollars of funds from our TIF to go to help move that station, the transit station. So, you know, a large chunk of our TIF funds are going to go directly to that.
If I may, Mr. Chair? Thank you, that's, that's encouraging, exciting. We discussed, Mr., brain stopped working.
Willis?
Willis, Mr. Andrews came to my mind.
Close enough, that's fine.
Yeah, Mr. Willis. You alluded, the timing's crucial here, and with the bus transfer station, that's also crucial. Lots of people in our community use that daily basis, will that, will we see something, if things go positively, things will happen there before your project demolition renovation goes? Or will, will, will we be without a transfer station for any time?
I think the, the quick answer is you will never be without a bus transfer station. It is very possible that the demolition begins, we have, we had a tiny window to get some national demo companies in here for a much less, for a much lower price, five, over $500,000 difference from what we could get from any Bay local. So we, we signed them up in January, they're still coming, I think that day is sometime late July, when they're going to get started. So that will happen, and there may be a time when, we've been working with Startran and the city to make sure that the, the bus transit station is still there and those folks are protected, even during demo. Now, so there may be a short time when that's all happening together, but it, it would not be a long process to get to the new location if it works out.
Thank you.
But as part of the demolition plan, even in the existing location, part of that was maintaining access at all times, and not shutting down that, that corner.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Other questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Willis, Mr. Work, thank you for coming forward today. I know that everyone's been waiting for something positive to happen at the Golds Project, and I too have been waiting to see what's going to happen there. I know this is a, a project that's fraught with 100 different things, all working at the same time, and I think you probably both know that I worked for the National Park Service for 25 years, and did a lot of historic preservation work. We're going to let that sit over. I understand the realities of, of development in downtowns and what needs to happen. I am glad to hear that you are talking about maintaining 1023's facade, because I think having a gap along O Street is a, is a problem. We've had this for 100 years, and it's what we think of when we look down O Street, and to see sort of the missing tooth would be very weird. And with the Aging Partners Building coming on to surplus right next door, we have an opportunity to see that building also rehabilitated, and I'd like to keep the O Street facade as much as we possibly can. Do you foresee using TIF dollars to tear down the South Tower?
Right now, I mean, there's no, that's not part of this, there is no, there's no TIF dollars, I mean, the demolition of the south half isn't part of this project, and so I guess the short answer is no.
Would you imagine coming forward in Phase Two and asking for TIF to be used to cover those costs?
The answer to that is, is that the project that we have been working on for quite some time, the city's seen some basic massing plans, but we aren't ready to present anything yet, is a much larger project. And so there's going to be a lot of TIF dollars available on that project. And so I think it's honestly really too early to tell whether or not we would need any of those TIF dollars for demolition or not.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
The other issue that I, I have some, so as a, as a preservationist, I guess I would, I would offer that it's awfully nice to be able to say, we have a document, we have some documentation on what is considered to be historic, even if it is, as, I don't know, someone said it's not attractive. But, so it may not be what makes them warm and fuzzy, but it would be awfully nice to have documentation, even photo documentation of that South Tower before it is demoed, just so that it's available, the records, because someone may at some point want to take a look at that and see what happened as Golds evolved.
Yeah, makes sense.
And then, and lastly, those vaults, let's talk about those vaults, because the way I understand real estate law, the city owning the right of way, we own vertically, we own the airspace, we own the subsurface, and so that will be a very complicated thing to negotiate, using vaults for parking. I would like to see some assurances about the city being held harmless on, I don't know, water infiltration or something, and I think the streetscape thing is really important to be thinking about that, because, you know, we have this thing about street trees in Lincoln, and we have a, a regular pattern that we expect, and I know that we can't plant a tree over a vault where someone's parking a car. And so I'd like to think about how those things mesh together, and how, you know, the city's not going to be held, that we're going to be indemnified for private parking within some layer of city property.
Yeah, and particularly dealing with indemnification and those issues, that, you know, the city code does lay out anytime there's a license for public right-of-way use, and this would fall under, you know, this would be the vault underneath, and so that would, that would still, it'd be under the same rules, and so, yeah, there's indemnifications, there's bonds that are required. We haven't got into the details of that license, other than conversations on what that looks like, but it is, but yes, all of that from a, you know, from the liability and indemnifications, insurance requirements, fees, that's, that is all part of the code, and definitely would be part of any agreement, any license that allowed the underground parking.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, and that, it really is crucial for downtown projects in general, but to, to get retail and to get, I mean, any sort of big project, to have that parking and allowing that, that extension into that, that areaway creates enough parking that really does make a huge difference for this project.
All right.
I can just tell you that the parking lays out really nicely if you get to use the areaways.
I bet it does. Those are very interesting spaces.
Yes.
All right, thank you. I have more questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Ma, yes, sir, Mr. Willis?
Oh, just a few comments, I've known that building quite well, company's been in there for a few years helping out. That south building is not built that well, it was, it's a big difference between the north and the south, and the type of construction. The other thing, I really appreciate it, Mike and Justin, is you guys really wanting to take this project on. I know you have a vested interest, right, to the west, and you want to continue to see that area grow and become a very vibrant and useful area, so I think you're the right ones to work on it, and trying to work on that alley will be a lot of fun, but...
We appreciate that, thank you.
But I think you're the right ones to do it, and I appreciate you going forward with this.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions for Andrew, Mike, or Justin? All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else that would like to talk or discuss this redevelopment?
Before we go to the public, just one moment.
Sorry, I apologize.
In the middle of the applicant's testimony, I saw Director Elliott come in, and I'd like to know if Director Elliott has anything she would like to share about the transit, the vaults, moving utilities, anything?
Thank you, Liz Elliott, Director of Lincoln Transportation and Utilities, and I just came down here in case there were questions. We are working closely with the project developers on this, on trying to secure a transfer station that works best for everyone, and I do just want to reassure that we will always have, FTA requires it, so before we have a new place, we can't move the current place. So we are definitely going to maintain something at all times, even after, if we are able to secure a location that we're currently working on, we do have to go through a number of FTA channels, whether it's, we've done equity analysis that we have to do, we have to do some environmental, they have assured us in our conversations with FTA that it shouldn't take terribly long, but it still is a, probably a four to six week effort once we... Once we are a little more certain of the location, that we have to start that FTA process. There obviously will still be some additional work that we have to do. Again, hate to announce anything yet until we know it's in writing and it's ready, because things seem to change frequently, as we all know. And, but I am hopeful, I am very optimistic, and I think ultimately, we have a good, really good potential with the option that could come up, and excited about some of the options that might be available to us. So, as soon as we know information, we will make sure to provide as much advance notice to our customers, our writers, and the public in general. We will also be reaching out to all of the property owners and business owners in the area where we are relocating. I believe that this is a potential change that will have minimal impact on businesses and property owners. So, we'll, much more to come, and we will do it as far in advance as possible, because we definitely do not want this to be a surprise, and we want as much information out there as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Elliott, could you tell us a little bit more about the complication with the vaults?
And I don't know much about the vaults and where they sit right now. That is something that we're all looking into, to get a little better understanding and also kind of the future intent of those. So, we will work closely with them and be able to come up with a plan. Obviously, the indemnification and some of those challenges, as we have with other vaults around the city, they do pose a unique challenge, and it's something we always work through. And unfortunately, I apologize, I can't tell you too much. I just am not as familiar with that right now. But we will definitely follow up.
Other questions for Director Elliott? Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Please come forward. If you could start by please introducing yourself and giving us your address.
Yes, my name's Serena Free with the Hot Mess, 408 South 11th Street. I just wanted to pop in, and I'm, one, I want to first say that we're all excited about seeing something happen with the Golds building. Recognize we're in phase of one, of two phases, and there's a lot of general uncertainty of what is kind of moving forward. One of the things that has been brought up is potentially leveraging an occupation tax in the restaurants and bars in the area for additional funding for this project. And I just think it's really important that we think about that, right? For us, you know, we're already collecting a 2% occupation tax for the Pinnacle Bank Arena that are, we divert to our customers. And I think, what does that mean for the city of Lincoln if we're going to continue to use sort of these developments and leverage occupation taxes onto the small businesses, the burden that that places upon us, and onto the patrons and the people of Lincoln? So, I just, I would like you to think about, as we're moving forward, making sure that occupation taxes aren't coming into this project. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Any questions at all? Okay, thank you. Anyone else who would like to testify on this item? Yes, please.
Hey, Nick Mastis with Muchachos, 416 South 11th. Kind of on the same line with the Hot Mess, we are, you know, we're collecting 2% occupation tax right now, and it's a concern. You know, we're a small business, our margins are very tight. And, you know, I know Hallie Salem, I don't know all the good stuff down, you know, I don't know how all these things work with the needs of hotels and restaurant spaces, but I do understand that local restaurants and local businesses will be affected by an additional occupation tax. I know 1% doesn't feel like a whole heck of a lot, but to me, it's the difference between, you know, getting to do something extra with my kids or, you know, doing these small things with my family, because that is my business. You know, and if we're bringing in large corporations or large hotel chains or large restaurant chains, they may not feel that, but we will, as local restaurant owners and local bar owners. So, I just come in to urge, to see if we can at least take a look at that and see what we can do, whether that's, you know, taking a look at the 2% occupation tax for the arena or finding another way to fund some of this. But, yeah, that's, that's it.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak on this agenda item? Okay, please come forward.
I guess I'm not a disadvantaged contractor. All right. Huh. Where's the prostitutes going to go? They're not coming back to my house, and they're not going to the People's City Mission. You know transitional housing? The People's City Mission. Where's the prostitutes going? They're not coming back to my house. I am 349 South First Street. You been by my house? How about you? Been by my house? Now, hm, now, you're a disadvantaged contractor, aren't you? NGC? No? Are you NGC? No? Now, listen, we all know exactly what's happened, and my house is in trustee sale. Not one of you get it. Not one of you. All right? So, let's see. My father-in-law helped build Golds building. My father-in-law was born in 1922. How come he's killed in 2009? Oh, that's right! That concrete company. How come TCW Construction's not around anymore? What was the hazmat cleanup? Jane Raybold? I know what send dine means, okay? And I know exactly what I'm doing. Now, hm, you know why I'm so angry? My dog got E. coli at your store. But hey, I'm supposed to be okay with everything, right? Huh. So, now, hm, I don't want the prostitutes back. So, guess what? They go that way, not this way. Okay? I am 349 South First Street, 1ST, the homestead of the Gonzalez family, and he was born in 1922. And Miriam was born in 1925. Not one of you get my property. Not one of you. Okay? Now, understand that. It's in trustee sale. Hey, did you guys go and look? You should. Hey, how's Tammy Ward? I sure hope she's okay. I hate a drunk. I really do. Worst thing I hate than a drunk is a hypocrite. Now, all of you are double-dippers. Okay? Now, you were with the Park Service 25 years? Don't hurt? Hmm. I retired to 349 South 1ST, that's First Street, Friday, May 3rd, 1996. Why does my house look like it does? Now, if you're going to give all this TIF, let's give some to the fireman. What about the fire that happened in that building? Now, isn't that awful suspicious? Now, what happened? Was it arson? Say, a fire happened in that building, and Fire Station 3 had to go to that fire. Now, isn't that funny? Hmm. All these people come in and they have to get all this TIF, but the first thing that happens, there's a fire. Hmm. Now, there was just a fire. Last time I was in front of you guys? April 25th? Did you know there was a big fire? I had no idea. I ought to have been there. I used to take pictures. Best pictures you ever get is firemen working. Now, the Fire Station 3, they can't even get bulletproof equipment, which you've given all this TIF to all these developers. Really? Well, you know what? I own Gambino Stables, working canines. I guess I'm going to be a disadvantaged contractor. Now, my husband graduated Lincoln High in 1971, and he's a veteran in distress. He doesn't even know his name. Now, do you guys think I'm going to let you keep doing with your city what you're doing it? No, I'm not. Now, hm, I'll be looking at the environmental impact statement, okay? I'm going to see the date on that, okay? Because the environmental impact statement said there would be no problems with my property. Really? I got another dead tree. I got a dog with E. coli from your store. Hmm. Oh, and I'm a Denver Bronco fan, okay? I grew up three blocks from the Denver Bear Stadium. You got any idea where that is? Smile High Stadium. Hmm. So, no, when you talk your trash, please keep talking it. We went viral on the internet in 2015, and yes, I got my rights violated by three Lincoln police officers. Think that's something. You know how far I can crawl? 101 M Street, Mr. and Mrs. Mike Pasca. Mrs. Pasca still had her concentration tattoos. I can crawl from her house to my house, 349 South First Street. Leave a note for my husband, and then I could crawl, and I'm an old woman, I can crawl from 349 South First Street down to the railroad tracks to the Spade House, okay? You know Mr. Mike Spade? One minute. I went to his grandma's house so I could get some help. And guess what their Lincoln police officers did? They knew I crawled, and they said they couldn't help me, and they left. So, I had to crawl back, and then I got mugged. I'm not taking any more prostitutes. I'm not taking any more People's City Mission, and we're not going to have any more sex offenders and no more transitional housing. And your 911? When we call 911, it's not going to be, "Oh, can you hold?" No, I'm calling for pizza. All right? 402-441-6000? Uh-uh. They're going to start doing their jobs correctly. Now, if you are offended, please call the Denver Police Department, okay? His name is Rich Blair. I've known him 50 years. And if you're real offended, call Commerce City Police Department. Commerce City, Colorado, 80022. His name is Detective Sergeant Chris Solano. And if you get real offended, please call the clubhouse, and the boys will be here in four hours.
Anyone else who would like to testify on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Willis, if you'd like to come back? Justin, Mike, whomever?
Thanks. To address the occupation tax question. So, first of all, the occupation tax is mentioned in the redevelopment plan because it needs to be in redevelopment plan before, as part of the enhanced employment area, prior to being approved, prior to being, you know, even brought before the council. It would have to be an ordinance that's passed before the council if and when it was done. In the plan, the idea is, again, this would not really even take effect until Phase Two started, and it's defined at this specific area, this specific location. So, it wouldn't, it would not affect anybody's, any existing businesses. So, it really would be, you know, a restaurant's going to locate in the Golds building in that retail, in restaurant space, that they would know ahead of time, all right, we're going to, that there's going to potentially be a 2% occupancy tax, so, or occupation tax. So, yeah, the hope is to create an enhanced employment area. Before that was done, that would have to come back before this council, and it would only be in that specifically defined area.
Very good. Anything else you wanted to add, Mr. Willis, for this time?
I don't think so. You have questions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So, I got two questions, just to make sure I got it straight in my head. So, if there was to be a 2% occupation tax, it has to come through the council first, so that would provide an opportunity for public comment and for the council to vote it up or vote it down, right?
Correct. Yep. So, it's a separate, it's a separate ordinance, just as, under the community development law, in order to get to that, there's two different ways to do an enhanced employment area, but with the redevelopment plan, we put it in the redevelopment plan under state law, but then again, still regardless of what it says in that plan, it, the occupation tax requires, it's an ordinance that must be passed by council, so you'd go through the whole process specifically on it.
So, and it would only apply to businesses that are within the hotel itself, right?
Well, the area, the area that would be defined, it would include Phase One, Phase Two, but again, it would be, it would be only the new, yeah, the Golds building. It would be a specifically defined place as part of the ordinance. And it wouldn't, it wouldn't extend to any of the businesses outside of that footprint.
Gotcha.
Yep.
And I guess the last question that I have, if I can, and it's going to, I'm going to ask you to take a stab in the dark, I guess. Do you foresee like more like chain restaurants, or do you foresee like more like homegrown businesses like Muchachos going in there?
I'm deferring on this one.
I guess, first of all, I'd say I don't want to limit ourselves in any way, but the truth is that everybody we're talking to is somebody that is definitely not in the downtown market and is definitely not a franchise. If that helps.
Awesome. Thank you for saying that. I just, they bring up a good point about protecting small businesses and...
Yep.
Awesome. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, very good. Thank you both. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, would you like to go back to item? Well, we have...
I'll defer to our city attorney. I had failed to read item 1C from the consent agenda for vote. We're currently in Section 5 with our public hearing. Should we continue and conclude Section 5 before we go back to item 1C?
Or would you prefer to finish up resolutions first?
Let's finish this section.
Okay. Madam Clerk, why don't you move on to 5B?
Okay. I'll be calling item 5B, Comprehensive Plan Conformance 22007, application of the Urban Development Director to review as to conformance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster Comprehensive Plan, an amendment to the Lincoln Center Redevelopment Plan to revise the Lincoln Flats Bank of the West Project to adjust the project area and availability of TIF to complete additional right-of-way improvements on property generally located at 1314 O Street.
Salem.
Hi, Hallie Salem, Urban Development Department, 555 South 10th Street, Suite 205. This hopefully is a fairly easy agenda item for you today. This is the, a project that we came forward with back in 2008, adopted Resolution A85062, and then also had a redevelopment agreement for this project as well, that was adopted in 2009 and amended in 2009. This project, originally, the Bank of the West, Lincoln Flats project, originally, we had hoped that the project would help fund some streetscape along O Street for the project. We, after negotiating the redevelopment agreement, realized it would not generate enough TIF to do so, and so we tabled the streetscape improvements. Really only had a small area for the, for the project, for those streetscape improvements, and then we did not carry anything out there. And what we have found is that now the project is generating additional TIF through the changes to the Nebraska Community Development Law. We now, anytime we're increasing the TIF over 5% of the original projected amount, we have to come back and amend the project. And so that's what we're asking to do today. We believe there will be up to $500,000 generated. That's if evaluations increase substantially. But probably projected more like in the $300,000 range, but this could then contribute to the O Street Downtown Corridors project that I mentioned before, as well as the Music District. The developer is actually considering doing some additional improvements related to this project in the old Bank of the West drive-throughs. That project, it would be an infill project, and they could contribute to the Music District by having some street frontage along there rather than the drive-throughs. And so we'd like to work hand-in-hand with the developer to make that an even better project by, by doing some improvements to the streets, streetscape along 14th as well. So, the developer is in support of the project. I didn't ask them to come today, but I'm sure they'd be happy to talk to you about it.
Questions from Salem? Yes, sir.
You said this currently is a TIFed project, correct?
Yes.
What year are we in the TIF at this point?
So, this, this, there's two and a half years left of the TIF.
So, we'll generate TIF for two and a half years?
Mm-hmm.
Or bond or money for the TIF. Okay. And you said this does include filling in the drive-through?
This project doesn't amend the private space, so it doesn't necessarily do anything to fund that infill development of the drive-through, but that's what the developer is intending to do, the original developer on the project. So, so then there, we're talking about doing some improvements on the streetscape side of it with these funds.
Other questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very excited about that Music District.
I know.
Would anyone else like to testify on this agenda item? Anyone else? Okay, very good. Moving on.
We can now vote on these items in Section 5. Item five A is Comprehensive Plan Conformance, two two zero zero six. Application of the Urban Development Director to review as to conformance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan. A proposed amendment to the Lincoln Center Redevelopment Plan to amend the Gold's Redevelopment Project to create a new project area, Gold's Redevelopment Project Phase One, to include the renovation and rehabilitation of the original Gold's Building for a hotel, commercial space, and underground parking on property generally located at ten twenty-three and ten thirty-three O Street. Introduced by Beckis.
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Raybold, seconded by McGinnis. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
For, for the folks who sent a very lengthy letter about historic preservation and the desire to, to preserve this building to the greatest extent possible, I hear you. And I am very supportive of preservation in general and also in moving development forward. And I will be voting for this project with the assurances that the facade of ten twenty-three will be preserved as much as possible. And, and that we will take a look at streetscape and make sure that things are well coordinated between the streetscapes along Eleventh and O and the preservation of the original Gold's Building.
Other comments?
I will just reiterate a little bit of what Councilperson Washington stated. I, I know a lot of us took a lot of time to, to think about the preservation of the Gold's Building and what that may look like. I am excited at the prospect of maintaining the facades that we see currently along O Street, along Eleventh Street. Even though we will be looking at the possibility of demolishing some of this building, I think, I think we will still preserve a good chunk of what the Gold's Building had. So I'm looking forward to it.
Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item five B is Comprehensive Plan Conformance, two two zero zero seven. Application of the Urban Development Director to review as to conformance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster Comprehensive Plan. An amendment to the Lincoln Center Redevelopment Plan to revise the Lincoln Flats Bank of the West Project to adjust the project area and availability of TIF to complete additional right-of-way improvements on property generally located at thirteen fourteen O Street. Introduced by Beckis.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Raybold, seconded by Schob. Comments? Yes, sir, Mr. McGinnis.
Even though I know this money will be going to the Music District, but we don't know that for sure. It could go anywhere, up and down O Street. I feel like this is, in essence, a money grab by the city to get extra TIF money off of something that wasn't needed before, wasn't brought up before. They've had enough money for their other developments, but they saw an opportunity to go ahead and TIF something, take it away from the other taxing authorities, so they can have it in their bank. There's other TIF money being used for this up and down O Street. I just think this is something they saw that there's extra money there and they just decided to go for it. So I don't think it's, it did much for the but-for test. I don't think there's a project out there that we have to have this money for, to make it a but-for, that the project wouldn't go through without this money. So I, I'm gonna be voting against it. I just think it's something that we shouldn't be doing, is taking money away just because it's there.
Other comments? Okay, very good. Madam Clerk?
Bowers?
No.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
No.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
Motion carried four two.
All right, Madam Clerk, let's go back to Section one C.
Report for quarter ending May thirty-first.
All right, very good, Madam Clerk.
Washington, motion carried six zero. Thank you.
All right, six A.
Section six, Lancaster County Health Department, and...
This?
Lopez, Lincoln Lancaster Maintenance is about 20 years old. We also visited, so...
Madam Clerk, comment on this agenda item? Okay, very good.
For the lease of equipment to be utilized.
All right.
Motion carried six zero. Items and organizational development. Ending the PSC, introduced by Wash... Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis? Zero zero one, request to allow vehicle stacking for drive-in.
So moved. Second?
Seconded by Raybold, comments?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis? Zero three, allow truck wash facilities as a permit and/or truck wash facility to remove conditions related to...
Madam Clerk?
Zero. For change from R seven residential.
Moved.
Second?
Moved by...
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington? Application of Parks and Recreation Department, ending from Harrison Avenue to Perkins Boulevard.
By Raybold?
Gating rink down there, it's a lot better than it's being utilized right now, so...
All right, very good. Madam Clerk, please.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item seven H is Comprehensive Plan Conformance, two two zero zero four. Application of the Urban Development Director to review as to conformance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster Comprehensive Plan. A proposed new Bishop Heights redevelopment plan to develop retail space, office space, and multifamily dwelling units on 22.18 acres of land, generally located at the Bishop Heights Shopping Center at the northeast corner of South Twenty-seventh Street and Highway Two. Introduced by Washington.
So moved. Second?
Moved by Washington, seconded by Raybold, comments? Councilwoman Washington?
I want to say thank you to the developers, the development group that came together for this project. Seeing that area empty and not used very well, my apologies to the fast food restaurant and the bank that remain. But to see the vast majority of the Bishop Heights Shopping Center left vacant. And it's really good to see a project come in. I know it will be a change for the neighborhood, but I think it'll be a good change. And I really appreciate the, the nod that the developers have given to the trail and trail improvements. And I hope that as that project moves forward, that when they see an opportunity to give a nod to pedestrians and bicyclists, I hope that they do. But it's a good project.
Other comments? Yes, sir.
Yeah. Again, as an old, as an old person, I guess I'll be sad to see, sad to see there will no longer be a treasure city there at this location. But again, I want to thank the developers and such for coming to town and being willing to put this kind of money into our community. It's gonna be a lot of money and it's gonna be a huge upgrade for the area. So again, thank you.
Other comments? All right, very good. Madam Clerk?
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item seven I is Change of Zone, two two zero one, two. Application of Olson Associates for a change of zone from R one residential to B one. Plan unit development and B one local businesses to plan unit development for 230 multifamily dwellings up to 115,000 square feet of commercial floor area or a 150-room hotel and 95,000 square feet of commercial floor area with waivers on the property generally located at South Twenty-seventh Street and Highway Two. Introduced by Washington.
So moved. So moved. Second?
Moved by Washington, seconded by Raybold, comments? Very good. Madam Clerk?
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item seven J is amending the fiscal year 21-22 CIP to authorize and appropriate $3,677, excuse me, $3,607,264 in tax increment financing for the Instinct Redevelopment Project. Introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Washington, seconded by McGinnis. Comments? Mr. McGinnis, yes, sir?
Yeah, since I'm gonna have to speak on everything, I think, tonight. This is quite a project. This is a long time coming. This is a national company that was willing to, again, invest in Lincoln, Nebraska. We're talking a large 250,000 square foot addition at a high cost of money because of the type of production that they're gonna be putting out there. And the type of jobs they're gonna create is a win-win. We just celebrated the Duncan addition, and this one is another one that we can celebrate, that people are willing to invest in our community. So this is something I'll be very happy to say yes to.
Other comments? All right, very good. Madam Clerk?
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item seven K is authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds for the Instinct Redevelopment Project in the amount not to exceed $3,607,264. Introduced by Washington.
So moved. Seconds?
Moved by Washington, seconded by Raybold, comments? Madam Clerk?
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Okay. That concludes Section Seven. Section eight is Resolutions First Readings, which are Items eight A through eight F. Section nine is Ordinance's First Reading and Related Resolutions is Item nine A and nine B. Section 10 is Pending List, Item 10 A.
All right, we will go ahead and move forward to the public comment section of today's meeting. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not a plan to appear on a future agenda may do so now at the open microphone session. Individuals are allowed a total of five minutes to speak regardless of the number of topics. Would anyone like to address the council? Yes, sir, please come on down. If you could please start with your name and address, we'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir. My name is Kenton Bellamy, and I live at 2141 North Seventy-Ninth Street. And I'd like to thank all you council members and for your public service. Thank you very much. What I've got here is just a small agenda. On my location, they have a street improvement project for fixing the sidewalks and the ADA requirements on the corners. And in my neighborhood, right there, which I've got a copy of right here, and I have some concerns, major safety concerns for the public. They came into the corner of this property, and not just mine, there's about six of them in that neighborhood right there. And this is up in the Cahoe area. There's Cahoe School, that Northern Lights. They're real nice neighborhoods up there, and they're very, very good walking neighborhood. And the situation I'm concerned with, I've already talked with the Buildings Department, and it's Byron Perry was assigned to talk with me. He was very, very helpful, very good. But this has gone on since March 31st, is when the project started. And each, which you know, on construction projects, I've been in the construction world 45 years and built a lot of buildings. And everything you run into, you run into certain situations that have to be addressed differently than the perfect world. They come in there on this location, and then there's other locations too. And they took out the corner. They dropped it two and a half feet from the original. And I've got pictures of stuff, but I haven't figured out how to get them all on all this. But I want you to be aware of this situation because the public, 'cause they dropped this two and a half feet, it's made the sidewalks really, really steep. And my concern is, the public really doesn't like crossing where they chose to put this crossing. And there is a gradual hill on Garland Street and North Seventy-Ninth, where they connected the two neighborhoods together. And in this situation, when you're standing in that corner, it is very, very dangerous due to the repavement project and Garland Street. It is like a racetrack down through there. Garland is a straight-through street from the west to the east and vice versa. And everybody comes up, turns the corner, comes up, and crosses at Seventy-Eighth Street to go around the corner there because they can see the traffic coming better. When you're standing in Seventy-Ninth, there is the hill, and here you are. You cannot see the traffic coming down through there. That's just one problem. Another problem is that I see this is gonna happen is now that they've cut this out of there and they've got their sidewalk project done, they, all the yards in the new neighborhood in Northern Lights...
One minute.
All have to have sod, nice sodded yards. All of us are that way. They come in and just sprinkle a little bit of grass seed, expecting the grass to grow. And you've got pictures of weeds three foot high in there. And this, I need a phone call from you to be aware. And when it comes to winter, and I've shoveled that walk 22 years, and to keep that corner cleaned off, now I've got a sinkhole there that is gonna drift shut two foot deep, and it's gonna be filled full of ice every winter. And it's not just mine. There's another one on Colby Street, too, Colby and Seventy-Ninth. Why they chose to dig out that much dirt is, and I questioned this Jeff that was the project manager before they poured it and said, you know, this just doesn't look right. You need to look at this whole thing and reanalyze it.
Time.
And I got no results. And I had his supervisor come out and they measured everything and leveled everything up, but it's below ADA approval of the slopes. So it's low. And I, I don't really know what to go to or who to go to next. And I would just like you to check this out sometime or have somebody make a phone call to, I think it's Kristen Humphrey, and see if we can get these items addressed.
Okay.
Because my homeowner's policy makes me liable, and they're concerned about the ice sitting in these holes. Because what they've done, the street is sloped there and goes around the corner. What needs to happen, they needed to be at least level with the higher side of the street, not the lower side of the street.
Mr. Bellamy, I apologize. You're, you're, you're over your, your minute.
Okay, that's fine. And I just, that's the only concern that I have in this situation. But I need to think the pub, you know, this is a walking neighborhood and I look after, and what they've done on these corners just doesn't appear to be right to me.
Very good. Questions? We have the address. Thank you, sir.
2141 North Seventy-Ninth, and it's on that piece of paper for her. I appreciate it, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for tolerating all this public. Thank you.
It's kind of our job. All right. Anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward. Hi, could you please introduce yourself and give your address?
Yes, hello. Hi, I'm Lizzie Turner, she/her pronouns. I'm at 1614 D Street, Apartment Two. So hi, everyone. I'm a community organizer at Nebraska Appleseed for Collective Impact Lincoln. I am also a resident of the near-south neighborhood, a renter, and someone who loves talking to my neighbors. Now, I know my colleague Casey Ogil has been here a lot recently, and you know Collective Impact Lincoln well. But as a refresher, Collective Impact Lincoln is a partnership between Nebraska Appleseed and Civic Nebraska that works with residents of six Lincoln neighborhoods to build community, develop neighborhood leaders, and take action on policy that is responsive to our neighbors' needs. Throughout our years in deep connection with Lincoln neighbors, housing has consistently come up as one of the most important root concerns for Lincolnites. And tonight, some of those neighbors are also joining us to share with you why safe and affordable housing is important to them. So we know as a city that Lincoln is lacking in affordable housing, and we are all working on different strategies to address this problem. Housing is unaffordable for 45% of Lincolnites who rent at all income levels. It is our lowest-income neighbors who are most drastically impacted by the shortage of housing stock with 86%, 86% spending over a third of their income on rent. And the problem only continues to get worse as neighbors see dramatic rent increases that are not accompanied with wage increases. We have tools available that are supposed to help families to be able to secure stable housing that does not cost burden them, tools such as public housing vouchers, social security and disability income, and other housing... and disability income, and other housing vouchers from local nonprofit organizations. However, these tools are not being properly utilized when at least twenty percent of voucher holders are unable to find housing that will accept that form of payment. This is why myself and supporters are here tonight to ask the city council to pass an ordinance banning this form of discrimination that keeps our neighbors from securing safe and affordable housing. Source of income discrimination is no small problem, certainly not for our neighbors who seek to use housing vouchers, and not for anyone who cares deeply about our neighbors finding somewhere to call home. It is so widely acknowledged of a problem that the topic even came up on a recent episode of Last Week Tonight with John Oliver, you can check it out on YouTube if you'd like. Source of income protections are a popular method to increase access to housing. We recently conducted polling in Lincoln, which found that the majority of Lincolnites would support these protections, a finding that was not surprising to us because we know at its heart, this is a city that wants to care for each other. As of January this year, twenty states and a hundred fifteen counties and cities have adopted protections for renters that would ban source of income discrimination. If Lincoln were to take similar action, we could cut Lincoln's voucher failure rate in half and more effectively use this tool for affordable housing here in Lincoln. The people of Lincoln need you to take this popular action to ban source of income discrimination. As rents and cost of living continue to rise, we cannot allow this situation to get worse. Collective Impact Lincoln, our teammates and neighbors are here as a resource and are committed to doing everything we can to pass these protections for Lincolnites. That's all from me, and I'll pass it off to some of our other folks that are here to talk on this tonight. Thank you so much for your time.
Good, thank you. Any questions? None, thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the council?
Hi, y'all, my name's Caitlin Shadoan. I live at fourteen hundred South 20th Street, apartment five in Lincoln, and I'm asking that the city would pass an ordinance that would prevent source of housing, or source of income discrimination within housing. So, I'm a graduate student, and I have a very limited income, and I'm not able to work during the school year past my stipend, and so it's been really difficult finding housing before I moved here and now living here. And I'm actually looking for housing again because my rent just went up by a hundred and twenty dollars, which was like a shock to me, as with most of my friends as well. So, in this process of looking for new housing, I've noticed that on websites like Zillow, apartments.com, and even Facebook Marketplace, there's a lot of, no LHA, we don't accept Section Eight, and that's just really, it's really disconcerting, like, that I can't find an affordable place to live, and that people like me can't find an affordable place to live. So, I am pleading with you guys to pass an ordinance that would protect people like me who have income or a lower income, and would ban income discrimination in housing. So, thank you.
Questions? All right, thank you so much. Anyone else who would like to address the council? Hi.
Hey, hello, council people. Just gonna say, that's not voided. Don't start the time yet.
No, you're fine, you're fine. And we also have accommodation for another microphone if you'd like one.
Oh, sure.
Okay, very good. Austin? If you'll give us just one moment.
Okay, no problem. I don't know if it's possible too, but it would be nice if there was a, something permit that is just more dignified to roll on up to something as opposed to.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. It's been a long time since I've done karaoke.
If you could please start with your name and address.
My name is Vincent, I go by Joey Litwinowitz, L-I-T-W-I-N-O-W-I-C-Z. And I just wanna comment to the extent that, you know, affordable housing is extremely hard to find. I was homeless for a while, for about a month, and, you know, and I got, with MS, I was so fatigued, I basically took, you know, I put a big slash in my wrist, and so I went to the hospital, and I was hooked up with somebody from, from Family Services, and she was a bulldog. She was new, and she called every day for a while, and found me a place. But it's just amazingly difficult. I tried on my own, and, you know, with my, you know, fatigue and the MS and being homeless for a while, I think it would be great if we could somehow incentivize people to do this. I know sometimes it's hard for smaller, I used to work for Habitat, and I renovated old, sometimes historic houses, and so I know, I know the landlords, you know, they have some issues too. And so I just wanted to speak on that, and then I also wanted to talk about, I've been, I was on accident on the bus, and the mornings didn't hold me, and so when the bus driver took a jog, it centrifugal force threw me pretty well. My head hit the seat across the aisle, and my head's a rock, but my neck, I've got extensive damage from high school sports, and it's bothering me. And I'm talking with the city attorney, but I have core strength problems, I'm in a chair now, I had five shots recently on my lower spine, I really don't need any more problems. And the bus drivers, you know, they're pretty good, it's this equipment, you know, I've known, even when it looks like it's, you know, it's adhered, you know, it's locked, it sometimes one slides, and when you get two to slide, like, it just, nothing, I was looking straight at the road, and then, next thing I know, my head was on the seat, and then everything else-
You know, the chair?
-you know, slammed down. My head hit first, and I was lucky I didn't break my neck. Actually, I'd like to see the video, I'd like a copy of it too, but I'm lucky I didn't break my neck. And another thing, I went to go to a polling place for the election, and I like to see if there's a sidewalk going all the way and all that for disabled people, you know, we need that rise over run, one to four too, there's plenty of places, like the other guy was talking about. And so, in that process, I thought there was a church, but still, it was park, you know, park high, grade school, and so I was there, and I saw there was some new cement there, and there was a path adjacent to the curb, and it looked, all looked the same white, and that into the street. And so I negotiated it once, I was looking around to see some evidence of a place that looked plausible to enter, you know, even though they have signs on Election Day. I went down there just to check it out, and then I'm looking around, and I come back on the second or third try, and I'm kinda tooling around now. I asked a couple people, you know, in the neighborhood, I think, one of them, and I wasn't sure, and so I ran over the curb, it was right next to the pathway, it was level. We need some, it's hard to put red paint, you know, immediately, I don't know what to do, maybe some cones, but some kind of a way to, because I was going pretty, pretty good, and then I went over the curb, and then, you know, I flopped down on the pavement, and so I hurt my knee. And furthermore, you know, when the firemen would take you, they don't take your chair to the hospital.
One minute.
And so against medical advice, I said, the only reason why I'm not going is because I don't know where my chair's going. And you can look at the conversation on the bus, that I was talking to the fire department, where there was some confusion about what would happen, and this is my, this is my arms and legs, and, and so, and, you know, it would be nice if, man, there's something else that's, that's pretty good too. But a minute left, and just to reemphasize about the housing, we need more of it, especially for disabled people, you know, it's hard to find. And, you know, it's even harder to find with small landlords, you know, it's just, you know, it's the way it is. And so I know we're building some more stuff. I read the whole, like, the whole report, you know, eighty pages on the upcoming, you know, the city planning for housing, and I know it's kinda complicated, and it's interrelated, and so I just hope we could do something. And, man, there was something else, but it can wait till, what, the first Monday of next month?
Second.
Okay. Because it was just as juicy. Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I gotta go home, it's best I go home.
Appreciate it. Anyone else who would like to address the council?
Hello.
Hello.
My name's Cassie Lotman, I'm at twelve twenty-five C Street. I've been an advocate for affordable housing and housing justice for the last several years, especially through an organization called Renters Together, though I'm no longer a renter, I believe renters are good neighbors. A lot of my neighbors are renters, and I love my neighborhood. So, I think this protection that has been talked about before for source of income discrimination is really important because over the years I've talked to a lot of people who have faced this issue, they get a voucher, and then they've been waiting on the list for a year or two, and then they only have a few weeks or months to find, find a place to use that voucher, and then the voucher gets passed on to the next person. So, as Lizzie said, that twenty percent of people who aren't able to use their vouchers, that's what's going on, they're calling every day, every landlord they can find, and not finding anyone who will rent to them, and then they lose their chance, and an opportunity for a family who needed that housing is taken away, and they're back on the waiting list till the next time around. So, that's, that's why I think it's a really important protection to pass. I haven't heard from a lot of people that it's controversial at all, and I think to the extent that it is controversial, it's just stigma, that people don't want to live around people who are less wealthy than them, or who've fallen on hard times, and I don't think that's a good reason not to pass this policy. So, yeah, that's all I have.
Questions?
Can I make a, I just wanna make a statement. I'm, I'm really thankful that you brought up renters, because so often not when policy gets talked about, and when folks reach out to council, they talk about being a property owner. And so, thank you for advocating for renters, and thank you for bringing that awareness to the council and the city.
Any other questions? For Lotman? No, great, thank you.
Sidney?
Hi, my name is Sidney Butler, I live at four zero nine North Twenty-Fifth Street. I am a case manager here in Lincoln for people experiencing homelessness due to domestic violence. And while my work informs my testimony this evening, I am not here on behalf of any organization, I'm just here on behalf of myself. The clients that I serve face many barriers, including leaving their abusive partners, healing from the abuse physically, mentally, emotionally, and often financially. They have to undergo custody battles, divorce hearings, and maneuvering a complicated criminal justice system. All of these barriers often feel insurmountable, so when they finally come to the top of a list for a Lincoln Housing Association voucher or another housing program, they finally are feeling that sense of hope and regaining the independence that was taken from them in their abusive relationship. That is, until they start calling landlords or looking online for an apartment. It often takes hours, or days, or weeks, and in my experience, even sometimes months, for my clients to be able to use the subsidy that my program provides, because they will call landlord after landlord and be told that their money is no good, and that they are not, I guess, worthy of being rented to, because they are not able to pay for their own rent, and they need that assistance. The process is grueling, it's discouraging, and when you've already been a victim of abuse, it just makes everything harder, it makes living day-to-day even more difficult. Every person deserves a safe place to live, and utilizing rental assistance or a voucher should make accessing housing easier, not harder. So, I just ask that you stand for some of the most vulnerable people in our communities, and, you know, introduce and pass a ban on source of income discrimination.
Any questions for Sidney?
Thank you.
All right, very good, thank you. Anyone else here who would like to testify? Thank you.
Good evening, excuse me. My name is Vic Clafter, I'm a resident of South Salt Creek neighborhood, excuse me. And I'm here in my personal capacity. I do wanna tell just a simple story to demonstrate both the impact of source of income discrimination, and also the opportunities presented by addressing it. I was leaving my rental place last year to move to a different residence. It was a great house, had a backyard, it was a two-bedroom, it did have carpet and a bathroom, but not a big problem, otherwise it was a great place. It was near schools, and it was affordable for someone making about nineteen dollars an hour working full-time, if there was one income. I knew that my landlord did not take Section Eight, he'd made that extremely clear when I first started renting from him. He'd also, throughout my time, had made odd comments when I had asked about setting up a pool for my niece to come visit, just a waiting pool, and he'd said, I don't like kids coming on the property because it's a liability thing. And of course, that, he doesn't have the legal grounds to actually tell me I can't bring my niece or whatever, but there was different indications that he was not a fan of kids being around his rental property. And I talked about housing programs, and said, you know, I'd be happy to explain various things and how they work anytime, and we had a good relationship. As I was leaving, I realized this is a great opportunity to try to get a family into that house, because houses are so hard to get families into, whether you have assistance or not. So, I called a friend at Educare and asked, do you have any families who this would work for, are they going to any of these schools nearby? And she and I brainstormed family after family, and it didn't matter if they were gonna be near the schools that they'd already been going to. She had a lot of families who were desperate to get into a house because they were in a too, often it was just a too-small apartment, or had kids with special needs that could really benefit from having a yard, they could play more privately. They all needed assistance or had assistance to afford their current apartments and would have needed to continue their Section Eight or other program in order to afford this home. Educare is incredible, they provide wraparound services for most of the families that they are serving. They are just so dedicated to a mission that every kid has access to quality pre-elementary education, whether they have resources or not, to pay for that. And housing is, adequate, safe, affordable housing is, is the literal wraparound resource that all kids need to be able to be successful in that pursuit. And it sets the, sorry for the puns, literal foundation of everything that those parents and Educare staff are seeking to manifest in these kids' lives. Source of income discrimination, I echo all the things that have been brought up about how addressing it would solve issues, I also really wanna focus in on how, it is a coded form of discrimination for all, most if not all of the things already enshrined in Title Eleven in our city charter, that we are not, we have said in the city we will not discriminate on, but it especially targets kids, and allows this out for landlords to say, no kids. And we as a nation have said it, that is not who we are, and that is not who Lincoln is. From other past experience, especially with lots of conversations at people's doors when they are on the precipice of losing their housing entirely to eviction, two out of three folks who, who I got to speak to, who at least had stayed that long for me to speak to as they were in the midst of this crisis, had kids. And basically, everyone I talked to who I ever got to like ask for the question had some sort of code issue happening. Mold, or railing broke, or something had happened, or was existing. And I think there's, the big thing that we've heard from landlords that, as a kind of a excuse, is, oh, I have to bring things up to code in order to accept Section Eight.
One minute.
That should not be an excuse. And there are a lot of great ideas for mitigating that and implementing source of income discrimination smoothly and effectively, including helping landlords, especially small-time ones, bring up those, some of those small code things, funds that are available for that. And doing so, taking this on holistically helps with both the code infractions and the source of income discrimination at one time, implementing it altogether, and it comes back to kids, because kids need safe places, but most of all, they need places, and their parents are just desperately trying to provide that for them, and getting all the help that they can, still, it is so, so difficult for them to find any home that meets their needs. So, that was it. Thank you.
Questions for Vic? None, thank you. Other folks who would like to address the council? Please, sir, come forward.
Good evening, my name is Gene Echol, that's G-E-N-E-
Good evening. My name is Jeanne Eckel. That's G-E-N-E-E-C-K-E-L. I'm with the Apartment Association of Nebraska. We're at 12143 West Center Road up in Omaha, Nebraska. We represent about 335 apartment communities throughout the state, going as far west as right now, I think Carney, and we have about 46,000 units that our members manage. We are an affiliate of the National Apartment Association. I think that's important because as I will tell you in a little bit, what our efforts have been nationally to try to help out the affordable housing crisis and try to fix the Section 8 voucher programs. We do support, our industry supports the Section 8 voucher programs, but we are going to pose efforts to try to make this as a source of income. When Congress created this program, it was intended to be voluntary. And the reasons why landlords, especially in our industry, are not willing to be part of the program, it's because of the strings attached, not because of the source. The bureaucracy, the regulatory process, it makes it more expensive for the management companies and the owners to be able to meet everything and keep that unit on the market because sometimes if there's an inspection, the inspection fails, they have to wait for the inspector to come back and go ahead and re-inspect it to make sure it passes. If that situation occurs, that unit can't be put on the market. So if the inspector can't get back in a reasonable period of time, sometimes depending on the public housing authority, it could take a month or more. And so that unit's sitting there not being rented. If the inspector could get there quicker, then the unit could pass the re-inspection, get back in the market, then the family can get back in and start living there. I do have, if I can, there's a chart that shows the process and I'll just have, give that to you so you guys can take a look at it and look at the process. On the left side is going to be the process of just conventional, the leasing process. When someone applies, they go through the system. On your right side is going to be the process when you're under Section 8. I might have an extra copy here. Yep, I do.
If not, they're part of the record.
You see that? I'm not sure. As I was saying, that's been the big reason.
Can you turn it just? There we go. Yep, thank you.
But that's been the big reason nationally. Now, we are working with Congress. There's a bill in the House of Representatives. It's called the Choice in Affordable Housing Act. And what this has been doing, our process is going to be, let's streamline this so we can get things done quicker, faster. And that is the reason why, at least our industry, we're not willing to be part of the program because of the process that's been involved. I have been in this industry for 10 years. When I meet nationally with providers that give rental housing, I have not heard one person ever say that they don't want to rent to people. What they say is, "These are the problems we're having with the Section 8 voucher program." Remember, this is something that's being controlled by HUD. The funds go down to the housing agency. The housing agency distributes that out to the people that have been applying for the programs. This is not something that's going to be run specifically by the city. And so when you have to deal with federal regulations and HUD, it changes things up and I want people to understand that's been the process that's been affecting this. Now, if we do go through with something like this, then what's going to happen is going to have the opposite effect. The effect is going to be that rents are going to increase. One, because the landlords are going to have to cover for the expenses that they weren't dealing with originally when they were made to be part of this program. And it also doesn't really address the issue that we're dealing with. And the issue that we're dealing with right now is that there's just not enough housing. And that is why it's increasing all the rent. If we had enough housing, that's going to stabilize the rent because there's going to be more choices for people to have. They may go to the next step. The next step is, okay, what other avenues do we have to make affordable housing? One, we have the low-income housing tax credit properties. We need to build those. We need to incentivize our developers to start building more of those low-income housing tax credit properties. We need to deal with people saying, "Not in my backyard." It should be, "Yes, in my backyard."
One minute.
So, the other parts we can do, we could do workforce housing, maybe some subsidizations to both at the federal, state, and city level to be able to incentivize the developers and owners to be able to say, "Look, we know if we can maybe charge an affordable rate that people can buy, but we're going to have to have some subsidization because of the increase in cost to build, develop these apartments, it's going to take a lot." And you just can't drop the rate and say, "Okay, well, you're going to charge this much, but you're still going to be operating at a loss." So, we are the experts. We build. We're willing to work with you. We already have a task force that we're working with the city of Omaha on. We welcome the opportunity to sit with you and see what we can come up with to address this issue, but we do not think that source of income, making that a protected class, is going to be the answer to this. I do have-
I'm sorry.
I do have people following me that can give you more specifics because they work in the industry, management, and renting to people. But if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them for you.
Yes, questions. We'll start with Councilwoman Washington.
I just have, I think I have just one question. What organization did you say you represented?
We are the Apartment Association of Nebraska.
Of Nebraska. Thank you very much.
Apartment Association of Nebraska. This is-
Councilman Powers.
This is going to sound like a trick question, but I swear that it's not because I don't know the requirements that go into it. But you mentioned that if a person has housing and then an inspection has to be done, and then if it's not up to housing criteria, then it has to be essentially taken out and fixed up before you can get there. So, I guess what I'm wondering is like, what is okay for a failed inspection for a person to live in that's not under housing, right? So, what would make a housing, an apartment for a housing voucher be a failure but would still be okay for a person who does not have a voucher to live in?
I think that really, and I think the people that follow me probably will be able to answer that question better than I can. It depends on really the inspector. There could be someone say, "Well, the faceplate is cracked on that, so that's going to fail." Other inspectors might say, you know, "It's not a big deal." I believe and I don't want to misspeak, that you're not able to fix it at the time. Like in Omaha where they do the rental inspections, they allow the landlords to fix the problem right there. So if it's a cracked faceplate on an outlet, they get to fix it. I don't believe that's what happens here with these inspections, but again, I think it depends on the inspector. So, that might be an answer to your question, that sometimes one inspector might be a little bit more aggressive while another one may not be. And I'm not saying that, and nor should we think that because one type of housing might have failed an inspection that someone who's not part of the program is going to be up to par either. So, I don't know if I answered your question, but it kind of just varies. I can't answer it all, but I'm sure my colleagues behind me can answer that for you.
Sure. And I think one thing that I'll just say, like as a response, you know, when you were talking about the building more housing, I am, I mean, I think as the city knows by now, based on some of our decisions that we've made recently, that I do believe that building more housing does eventually drive down the cost of rent, you know, when you have more supply and to meet the demand. But when we talk about folks that are in housing that are at the 50% of the income level, I mean, I do share the concern with folks that I've worked with in terms of trying to find housing now. And I admittedly get, I get stuck in, why would this money not be acceptable? You know what I mean?
And the answer to that, it's not because of the, it's not the source. It's because you're automatically making a landlord to be part of a federal program now and go with all, as you see in that chart, all the red tape that goes along with it, which costs money. That is why they're not doing, at least the people that I've known and I've talked to across the country for the last 10 years, that has been, and we've been lobbying Congress for the last four years on this. And I think we're right there. I think we're probably going to get this thing passed, but we, we're not saying, "Oh, no." We're saying, "This isn't working. Let's try to figure a way to get it done." And I, we think truly if we get this bill passed, we'll be able to incentivize landlords to start saying, "You know what? It's not that bad. We're willing to step back in and start doing this again." Because a lot of them used to do it and then they got out. And we believe the reason why is because the administrative burden that was on them when they did it.
And I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Since you represent an association, is there like a list of landlords that do accept housing?
I believe there are. Yeah. And again, my colleagues behind me can probably respond to that as well. But as far as I know, there, you can look it up and say, "Okay, these properties do accept housing."
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, very good. Anyone else who would, go ahead. Isabel?
Hi. My name is Isabel Solis. I'm at 2411 J Street. And I was just going to be moral support today, but I just can't keep my mouth shut. So that's my problem. I wanted to talk about a little bit of the experiences that I've had in talking with folks in the neighborhood. There's a woman, her name is Denise. She lives in the neighborhood over here and she explained to me about her housing situation. She has a housing voucher. Took her a long time to get there. I took her with me to the state capitol a couple of years ago to testify because this was such a big issue for her. She got so demoralized when she couldn't find a place to live just because of her source of income. What she shared with me is that before the inspections, she works really hard with her landlord to make sure that everything that is on that inspection list is totally fixed before they come because she doesn't want to jeopardize her housing situation. And so that's a thing, a process that she goes through with her landlord because they both understand that the landlord wants to keep her there because she's a good tenant. She wants to keep her housing and she knows that it's going to be such a horrible situation to go through again. The other thing that I wanted to share is that I had, I've been looking for somewhere to live because I'm moving and the city that I'm going to move to has a nondiscrimination clause for source of income. And it was so heartening to see that every single place that I was looking at on Craigslist, on Zillow, on like apartment, just different apartment companies, all of them were saying that they would accept Section 8. They were not going to discriminate against me because of my source of income. I don't have Section 8 in that city right now, but it's good to know because I'll be a full-time student and I won't be able to make an income. And if there's something that happens and there's something that I need to go through, that support net is ready to catch me there. That's not something that currently exists in the city of Lincoln. Source of income is so important for folks to maintain their stability. You've heard from people back here about how important that is. And, yeah, that's all I wanted to say.
Very good. Questions for Isabel? All right. Thank you very much. If there are more people who want to address the council, we have two mics. We can go side by side. So if there's anyone else that wants to address, come on up and get ready. Please, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Kristy Lamb, L-A-M-B, 8701 West Dodge Road in Omaha. I represent MP Dodge Management Company and I'm also a member of the Institute of Real Estate Management. We currently oversee just under 4,000 units between the Lincoln and Omaha area. First and foremost, I want to say we are proponents of affordable housing. We certainly support that. Presently, about 40% of our portfolio does accept housing choice vouchers. And primarily, we manage Class B properties, so primarily low-income and moderate-income families is who we support for most intents purposes. But we do oppose a blanket ordinance that would put, not that source of income isn't necessarily our issue, as Jeanne said, but it's the strings that tie to that. So on average, any time that we have an individual that's specifically using a voucher, it generally basically reduces, increases vacancy loss by at least 30 days. And overall, we see generally a 30 to 60-day gap where we're not able to secure rent for that period of time while we're working with the housing authority and that particular applicant through the application and inspection process in order to get them moved in. So what I would propose is that we really need to figure out ways and initiatives that we can make it easier for us to work with the local housing authorities. Not all housing authorities are built equally. And what I would offer my limited relationship that I have with the Lincoln Housing Authority, they're pretty okay to work with, but there's certainly things that we can do in order to expedite that move-in process in order to get them the housing they need quicker and again, reduce the vacancy loss for the owner. So it's not creating that financial burden through the vacancy loss. Almost all housing authorities restrict a move-in date, either the first or the 15th of the month, depending if they're a new housing applicant or someone that's transferring their voucher from one community to another. If they're transferring, they have to move in on the first of the month, no matter what. If they are new to the program, then some housing authorities will allow either the first or the 15th. So generally, if we have an application that comes in in the latter part of the month and it takes at least one to two weeks, sometimes longer for that inspection to happen, they're automatically looped to the next month. So we're automatically losing 30 to 45 days in rent. And they're potentially in a situation where they may not be able to extend their stay at their current point of residence to allow the extra time that's needed before the housing voucher would pick up at the next point of residence. So in that case, it's a lose-lose for both the resident and the property owner itself. Another item that comes up frequently, like I said, we manage a number of low-income tax credit communities and we're proud to do so. But in several situations, we had, we've had that has come up, when the tax credits fall off, generally it's either a 15 or 30-year extended use period, those property owners will come to us and say, "We want to move away from the housing voucher program." And we say, you know, "What's your, you know, why do you need to do that?" And generally, it's because we're not able to increase rents to the market rate. And they need to do that in order to invest money back into the asset in order to keep it hattable and marketable for everybody. So if there's a way that we could work for the housing authorities in order to make sure that one, on an annual basis, we can increase rent at a reasonable rate but still within market means and certainly on those low-income tax credits where there's potentially a cap on the maximum rent over that 15 to 30-year period of time, when those tax credits fall off, if we could have a one-time increase in rent for those housing voucher participants to get them back up to market rent and have the property have an income source that's necessary to invest back into the property and make some of the improvements that maybe they weren't able to make when they had such a tight budget under the tax credit when it was, you know, lower-income housing, then it's going to put them in a much better position, maintain the asset in a way that's going to help them pass those inspections, right, and maintain the safe and habitability of that community. It's probably the number one argument that we have to make or at least debate with some of our property owners when the tax credits are getting ready to fall off. They're great communities. You know, there's no reason not to maintain those individuals that have the housing vouchers. But even speaking with individuals and other management companies, we potentially lose, we're already in a housing, right, affordable housing crisis, and then we lose even more by not encouraging property owners to maintain it because of the restrictions that are put in place through the HUD housing voucher program.
One minute.
The other concern that's come up most recently is a couple, why we disagree with this thought process, but some individuals have argued in court that if a property owner accepts a direct deposit ACH from a housing voucher provider, that it prohibits their ability to evict them for cause. That could be a criminal act or property damage that's putting other residents in direct harm. And we disagree with that argument, but they have made it and a few judges within the Omaha area have considered that argument. Almost all housing voucher programs, including Lincoln, send their payments to the landlord via ACH. So if we're not able to stop that direct deposit, then basically they could harm their neighbor or create whatever kind of chaos that they want on the property. And yet again, it's tying that landlord and the property owner's hand in ensuring that they're maintaining a safe and hebbal community for everybody else. So it's those types of restrictions that concern us the most when we're looking at a blanket requirement to accept a housing voucher. When you accept a housing voucher, you have to sign a contract with the housing authority. And so the housing authority has complete control over the terms and the conditions of that contract. So it's putting all of the power into the housing authority and it's removing it from the property owner and the management company.
Good. Questions? Councilwoman Washington?
Ms. Lamb, thank you for coming from Omaha. You, and you're getting the question even though Mr. Eckel also talked about renting and vouchers. So when you talk about accepting vouchers, are you only talking about Section 8? Do you ever accept vouchers from other programs besides-
It's a lot easier for us to accept vouchers from other nonprofits that don't have a contract tied to it and don't have the regulations that are specifically associated with housing voucher programs. Much easier for us to do that in those cases.
And do those other housing vouchers from NGOs also provide assurances that rent gets paid? Or the background checks on the applicants?
They never, they never do background checks generally, at least very few that I've ever worked with personally. There are some assurances that rent will be paid. It depends on the program. Sometimes they'll make assurances for six months. Sometimes, a very common nonprofit in Omaha, they- in Omaha, they guarantee it on a month, like, it's a month-by-month basis, and the applicant has to complete certain provisions each month, whether that is job counseling, you know, or applications and things of that nature. So if they fail to perform in those functions, then they could lose the voucher, and then we don't have any assurances at that point. So it's a little bit of a trust factor, that they're going to continue to comply with the program, the resident's going to comply with those program requirements.
Thank you.
Questions? Councilman Bowers?
Okay. I think I just got three questions, but I would like to get your contact information before you leave, so we can have a deeper conversation, if that's okay. So you said that you're not supportive of a blanket version, but is there a version that could be supported?
I don't know what the right answer is, but somehow, like I said, we need to make it easier to work with the local housing authorities and take away, so we work, for example, we work with some housing authorities in Sioux City, in Bellevue. And so, say you know, fails an inspection. In those particular cases, we can take a picture of the item that we corrected and email it off to them, and they can pass the inspection off that. Or maybe they need an invoice, or something along that line, some supporting document, instead of having them to schedule and come all the way back out. So there's lots of different ways that I think we can streamline the process. I just don't know how you would go about that, since most of the housing voucher programs are kind of mandated through HUD, and each program has slightly different requirements, you know, through that, through the application and inspection process. So without, again, because we don't have control over it, that's what makes me nervous. But if there was an ordinance that also mandated that the housing authority also had to comply with certain provisions in order to make it an efficient process, then it would be a lot easier to support, you know, the use of housing vouchers. And it certainly would make my job, you know, as a third-party management company, in encouraging property owners to reconsider the application and the use of those vouchers.
The next question that I have, and I, this is, I don't know if you'll have the answer to this, but what I'm trying to figure out is, what does the federal government control versus like, what does the, what do we as a city council have control over the local housing authority? You know what I mean?
I don't know.
Okay. I don't either. We'll figure it out.
Sorry. I wish I could answer that one a little bit better, but...
And the last question I have is the same one that I asked the gentleman before you is, what, can you give me an example of something that would cause an inspection to fail, but would not be inhabitable to someone that does not have Section 8?
Truly, a common one could be, like I said, a cracked light plate. We've had a couple inspectors that have gotten a little nitpicky on, it was new construction, new construction, low-income tax credit, and they didn't like the number of, you know, stakes that were holding down the new mold, or whatever have you. And they failed the entire property over it, until we kind of re-secured that a little bit. A lot of inspectors are very good, and we don't, but once in a while, there would be one. There was, it was a property that was still within the extended use period of 30 year, and the property did have a bit of wear and tear on it. And they started failing the building, not just units, for housing inspections, because there was some stains in the hallway carpet. It wasn't tattered, it wasn't trip hazard, but there was some stains, the carpet was cleaned regularly, but that cosmetic stain was enough for them to fail the entire building.
So when you say cracked light plate is a way to fail an inspection, that's not like being dramatic. That's a very real thing.
Yep, that's a very real, yes. But in Omaha, at least, they have conceded fairly recently to allowing us to make, if it's like something minor that just happened to get missed, and we can have, we have a maintenance technician on hand to make that repair on the spot, then they'll allow it to pass and move on. But it's very, I believe in Lincoln, that you have, they have to come back in and make a re-inspection.
Thank you so much.
Other questions? I have a question for you. You had talked about ordinances that are mandated, and looking at requirements and what have you. We currently do not have any item before this council to consider source of income discrimination at all.
Okay.
What prompted you to come down here today? It seems like we're having more of a hearing than we are public comment. So what prompted you to come down here today to testify?
Honestly, I work closely with both the Institute of Real Estate Management and the Apartment Association of Nebraska, and thereby, I work closely with Gene. And they were aware that there was going to be some public comments on the source of income concerns. And generally, we feel it's relevant, instead of, no disrespect, just having an attorney, you know, speak from a legal aspect of it, to have a perspective from someone that has, I've worked in the industry for 24 years. I've raised my children in apartments, you know, in Lincoln, for most of their, you know, when they were toddlers. I believe in affordable housing, but yet I also recognize that it's very difficult for us to encourage certain property owners to embrace this, again, not because necessarily the stigma associated, but because of those strings that they see as a financial administrative burden to their, to their asset.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who's wishing to testify today? Last call? Okay, very good. I entertain a motion.
I move we adjourn, and I want to wish everybody a happy and safe Fourth of July.
Second.
Move to adjourn by Raybold, seconded by McGinnis.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Us.
Beckus?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
We are adjourned.